Today, Monday, April the 4th, 2016, 7:30 PM. I'm in Gordon, Georgia with the Honorable Mary Ann Whippleloo. We're going in to report tonight's meeting as I have done so many other times previously. Of course, this is a copy off the agenda. As you know, there are much controversy since Mayor Whippleloo took office. She is the black, the first black African-American female, the first female and the first black mayor ever in the history of Gordon, Georgia. The Ghetto Free Press will report on that.
Moving right along to the executive session of March 7th, 2016. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Yes, thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Good. Roll call will start with Councilman Nguyen.
Aye.
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 You guys have it?
Mayor, put your name on what you signed it with.
Sure.
Next, we have the council meeting minutes from March 21st, 2016. Do I have a motion to accept those?
Let me get a motion.
Motion has been made. Any discussion? No discussion. We'll hear from roll call, Councilman Nguyen.
Aye.
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 Yeah, I have it. Next, we have the mayor's notes and we just have here a card that says, "Thanks." This is for mayor and council. It meant so much. Thank you for the flowers due to the death of my grandfather. That's Ms. Heather Hawke. And I have here the letter that dated March 25th, 2016. This is the representation letter of, in connection with our audit of the financial statements of the City of Gordon, Georgia, which comprise the respective financial position and the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund, information as of September 30th, 2014, and the respective changes in the financial and where applicable, letter of agreement. This has been approved. Each one of you all were contacted regarding the audit to Malden and Jenkins in order that they may prepare everything and get ready for, what's that, Clifton, Lipton, and Hartley case. So, the financial statements have been, everything has been signed off on from the clerk, the deputy clerk, and myself. So, thank you all, councilmen, for the agreement with that. Just wanted to note that. And I have here from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, placing each one of you all's box, councilmembers, the notification of the new regulations regarding the City of Gordon Water Pollution Control Plant. And this is regarding NPGES Permit Number Georgia 0020397. And have you all had a chance to review that?
I reviewed. I've read it.
And they're stating this, Councilman Nguyen?
I have not reviewed.
Okay. What about you, councilmen? Do you know anything pretty much about this, maybe you can elaborate on it, on what this is?
Well, it's said there's a small change in it, you know, it's something we always have to be responsible for, you know, reporting and everything. There was a small change in it, something that they were telling us there's going to be a change, and if you don't agree to it, it's going to take place anyway. You know, they're just giving you that information. I think it's something we ought to do this way.
Okay. I know it says, "Notification to sign up for the NET DMR," and is this something like what we've done or the direct deposit?
Well, this is just for reporting on water, sewer, not water, but sewer, as it goes through the plant, the discharge, the discharge program, everything else.
So, it says, "To ensure you are meeting the requirements of the E-roll, you are required to electronically transmit your DMR to EPD using the NET DMR electronic system. And within 30 days of receipt of this letter, you must, as you said, must register for a NET DMR account." Do you know anything about this clerk, do we have this available?
Oh, Allen usually does all that. It's on his.
It's probably just sending all reports in, using that kind of instead of paper.
Okay.
That is what it say, that you would be sending, we need to be sending, um, with paperwork and they try to do the study the way we did.
All right. So, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with this. Okay. Let's see if there's anything else for the mayor's notes. I don't believe. Oh, except, please do not forget that you all have the invitation over to BASF Conference Center. This is, as a reminder, this will be April 21st. This is, the social hour begins at 5:30, dinner at 6:30, and you all, you need to respond by April 15th, 2016, and do plans until 10:00. So, just want to remind you, and also to remind you, for Thursday, April 14th, at the Middle Georgia Regional Commission, 175 in the Highway Macon, Georgia, that's regarding the District 6 Spring Listening Section. So, once again, I'll reiterate that to you. So, moving right along, I have no old business. Now, we'll move to the new business, beer and wine license application for Crenone Hotel.
This is for the stock and shop, changing ownership again. He has turned in his application and all the requirements have been met, and I recommend that be approved.
I make the motion that we accept the beer and wine license application.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 You guys have it? All right. Moving on to section B, first reading of ordinance, municipal court, date and time change. Is that the resolution or?
No, ma'am, this will be the ordinance.
This is ordinance number 2016. Is that a year date or what, or just a number?
That's a year and you insert the number of the ordinance. If you add two ordinances already, I can read number three, 2016, number three.
Ordinance of the City of Gordon, Georgia to change the date and time for the Gordon Municipal Court witnesses. Whereas Article 5, Section of the Charter provides that the municipal court shall be convened at regular intervals as provided by ordinance, and whereas the municipal court has been regularly meeting on the fourth Thursday of each month at 4:30 PM, and whereas the presiding judge of the municipal court requested that the regular court terms be changed for the convenience of the public and court officials. Now, therefore, pursuant to the authority vested in the council of the city, under the Charter and Code of Ordinances, the council hereby ordains that Article 5, Section 5.12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gordon, Georgia is hereby amended to read as follows, Section 5.12, convening of court. The municipal court shall be held on the fourth Tuesday of each month commencing at 10 o'clock AM, beginning with the court convening on the fourth Tuesday of June 2016 at 10 AM. This ordinance shall become effective as provided in the Charter and Code of Ordinances. All ordinances apart thereof in conflict with this article are hereby repealed. So ordained this fourth day of April 2016 at a regularly scheduled meeting of the mayor and council, first meeting on the fourth day of April 2016. George Nguyen, yes, no, or abstain?
Yes.
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 All eyes have it.
Okay. The second reading will be held at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, and that's when you'll vote on it, the second time it passes.
All right. That being said, that ends the new business. Now, we'll move on to the committee reports.
Excuse me, mayor, before we go into that, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss an open record request.
What is it regarding?
Open record request.
I mean, subject matter.
We received an open record request this morning, mayor, which was substantially the same as one we received last week from Miss Chastity Harris Farah, whatever her name is. And we need to discuss that with the council about how best to proceed upon two better questions to answer similar to one we already have. And, well, actually, the council may want us to take a response to that. May I all leave you?
All right. Council, are you in agreement? What's your recommendation?
We're going to discuss it in open session. Okay. Sure, I agree. They added to it. I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call of Nguyen?
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
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 You guys have it? Go ahead.
Counsel, we're, um, there's increasing concern over the, lately, there's been a lot of open records requests and duplicative requests, requests that have been made, then withdrawn and then changed, and then we're also getting complaints to the Attorney General's Office. Those complaints we're happy to respond to and answer. And so, it's taking a good amount of time, but it doesn't seem, there doesn't seem to be any real meat to any of it. It just seems to be what we would call, in legal terms, there would be a, like under the Civil Practice Act, there's discovery procedures, and we would call it adjuvant discovery if that's what it was under. Here, we would say these are dilatory tactics. In other words, these are being made only to cause delay, expense, unnecessary time and expense to the city with no, there's a question of whether these people are citizens of the city, what their reason is for doing this. We've talked to the Attorney General's Office about some of the complaints. We've also talked to them about some of the potential remedies, and we've looked at the law, and we feel like, at this point, we probably need to seek some type of adjunctive relief from the court, take this in person with a superior court judge is what we would like to do, and ask the judge to ask these people essentially, what is the nature of their business with the city, and why do they continue to make these repetitive things and cost the city money, and ask the court to stop them from continuing to do so. We have a duty to find to any open records act requests, but when they become, when they're coming in at the rate that they're coming in, if they're late and to the extent that they're coming in, asking for the volume of documents, a compilation of documents that they're asking for, it just becomes, for a city this size, it's a tremendous expenditure of time and money to do that. And they, like I say, the reason, in large part, the requests are repetitive, but they're also being made for, you know, things that are over huge, large spans. It's not like, give me the minutes for, you know, last council meetings, you know, for the past four years, for the past five years. And there's a large amount of work that goes into just figuring out what, how many documents there are, and if they're responsible to those requests, and also to giving a response. I mean, that's the front end that we don't get any compensation for. Now, once we say, "Here's how much it is," and then the people, you know, are giving a response, and they're asked to pay if they want to pay that money or not, but then they don't, sometimes they don't come back and pay, or they want, they look at it like a menu, you know? They give all these options, I want, like they're ordering, you know, this, 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 and then they come back and say, "Well, I want this, this, and this," and then that's what I want to pay for, you know? And so, that's creating a large amount of time. Not sure, I'm sure the clerk would agree with that. We got several questions. We want to finish this morning. All right. This morning, we got a request from Ms. Har, Ms. Farah, Piazza's Farah, Field Box, 894 Gordon, Georgia, requesting four items which were the same ones she requested a week ago and which we responded to, and to change the fifth item a little bit, but here's the catcher and part of the reason for our request. This request should also include all communication and correspondence in whatever tangible medium, whatever it means by tangible medium to start with, whatever tangible medium concerning the above mentioned items between and among agents of the city. Who is that? Gordon, non-agents of the City of Gordon. Who are non-agents of the City of Gordon? And elected officials. I mean, there's no time limitation there. There's no identification of who agents or non-agents of the City of Gordon might be or what a tangible medium is. Is it emails, letters, correspondence, or just what? So, kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't. If you don't respond like you're supposed to, you're going to get a complaint with the Attorney General's Office. If we do respond, we're going to probably just have to spend about three weeks down here trying to figure out what it is that we're looking for to make sure we've got it covered. So, the only remedy that we seek for that is to seek the help from the court system to try to curtail the usage of the Open Records Act.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. And now, council, you all, as you always say, that all of this, everything's filled out under the open records with the Attorney General's Office, so you might need to, Councilman Dan, Dan, what's your take on that?
They already seeking help from the court. I think they are going on with that.
Councilman Edie?
Well, I'm in agreeance with them. I myself have received an open record request that goes back, and all the emails that I have on my email account, which they named off specifically, my home email account, which that's what I use, Ms. Coangelo said that is legal for us to do that.
To use your personal email?
My personal email. Yes, ma'am, I do. And I can go back, but two years, I started on it, and I've already exhausted two print cartridges, and I was up to 100 pages, and I was only back to January of this year. I get all the GMA, you know, alerts, legislative alerts, everything that comes from them, everything that comes from GMA down, about any meetings that they have, like these District 6 meetings. Time I started, I just quit, you know, I'm just.
You quit on what?
Quit printing them out. I wasn't going to keep going. I mean, somebody's going to have to, you know, give me some direction on how I'm going to recover my money. The Sunshine Law mostly covers the city stuff, and it tells you what they can do and this and that and other, how much the city's charged, but I'm not part of the city. If I start charging, I'm going to charge them, you know, my cost. I make $25 an hour, so I'm going to start charging $25 an hour, and it's going to cost them if they're going to get any money. But somebody needs to start taking some action. It's useful stuff, most of it, you know?
Well, let me interject this and say that, and I hear what you're saying, but you know, I somehow understand how you're feeling, however, you know, I was going through all of that too, and did whatever, I, you know, read everything and followed through on everything, and however, you know, when I did do mine, I've not been reimbursed. So, I mean, you know, if that, we are going to do the one we need to do for all.
Well, the mayor has a account set up at City Hall through the City Hall computer and everything.
The who now?
The mayor has a account set up at City Hall through the local computer, always has, and that's what.
What account is that?
You know what it is, ma'am.
No, 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 I'm saying, what account are you talking about?
That's what you should have been using for your email for that, not all of your too personal, would you know?
No, let me say this.
You paid it out on a personal card, you know?
Okay. I hear what you're saying. But now, with that being said, being that my computer was hacked in, it was no more operative, was not up when I got back into office, and I, you need to know this, and with that being said, I don't know what was done to the computer, so with all that being said, the mayor has a new account and all of that, and all of that should have been dealt with. I thought all that was over with until such time as I got the computer back up and running and a new account, and so with all of that being said, I did whatever I was supposed to do, turned over everything, so that should have been the court issue dealt with me when I was going through, which I did not get that opportunity for you all to come in. I wish you all gave me that same opportunity to have such privy, privilege, but I was denied that, so moving right along, Councilman.
May I ask, Mr. Wilder, my turn, and I'd like to ask from the lawyers, what is y'all's request making mostly right now? Y'all wanting us to give you a motion for y'all to move forward to the court to address this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, that's my, okay, now you can move on and ask the other ones, and we'll come back.
You, Councilman, law.
I agree with all attorney.
He didn't elect her, he just made a statement, he wants to walk the court, but you know, you could understand. Moving right, Councilman, woman of the.
Anyway, I feel like there's, something has been opened up, now you can't close it up. Every way you look, everybody want open records on something, open records on this, open record on that, they got to pay this, they got to pay that. Now, you got it open, and you got it running out there, and now you can't start it because if you pay for it, you're supposed to get it.
Well, that's the other thing, you tell them what it costs, and then they come in and want to negotiate the rate because it's too much money, they think. Well, we don't know what they're asking for, we have to make a good pay, that's what the law requires, and the law allows the city to wait and not respond to the request because we've had instances in the past where people have made open record requests, and we give them, they've got 10 things, and we respond to 10 things, say, it's going to cost $20 for this, $50 for this, $100 for that, and $50 for this, and when they come in to pay, well, I don't want to pay that because it's too much, I'll just take this, this, and this. Meanwhile, y'all have spent taxpayer money to reproduce all these records that they then don't want because it costs money. Now, is that an efficient use of the city's time? I don't think.
Don't they have a set rate that they have to pay? Don't you have a?
They do, but then they decide they don't want all, they don't want all their requests. They don't want all the requests.
It is on the website.
They want to charity.
That's what Councilman Edie, I mean, I found out in the statement, that when you're requesting all of this information, I know early on, I was told that everything is on the website. So, with that being said, we clearly define everything that we need to know about open records requests, what you can and cannot do, and accept and receive, and what the payment amount is, because I know with mine, I think it stated 10 cents, I read that, but when I got up to the place to get a copy, they charged 11 cents. I've not been reimbursed, and I still say, "I want my money too." Now, moving on to Councilwoman Whipple.
I think Councilwoman toes raised a good point, and what she said, and I too have had an open record request that I had to deal with too, so I think that was a good point that she raised.
I mean, I hear what you all saying, that's all well and good, but my thing of it is my task. What's good for the goose is good for the cattle. Moving on to Councilman Nguyen.
I'm in complete agreement with the council meeting and the attorneys. We have opened up something, but we can't close it. I mean, I think a lot of frivolous that need to be done.
Who determines that?
I don't know. I just said, "I think that." I have a right to think.
We don't spend all the time. We're already standing there for him. At least I am, I don't know if I truly am. And I think that's within intent, so can you get the judge to stop that too? Can we get something done about that, attorney?
Ma'am, she wants you to stop the act of work.
The, all of this frivolous that's taken place with me, I mean, when does this end? This is three years into my position as mayor. So, with all of this that's been brought to me, don't you all think this is unfair? I mean, you. I mean, you, I've not done anything. When it comes to the credit cards and the, uh, moving of monies and all of the above, I mean, it goes on and on and on. And with all this being said, I don't think this was fair to me coming in as mayor, uh, receiving all these accusations, open recor-. I, I don't have anything to hide. It's just like saying about the, the, uh, we talk about everything else about, but everybody, uh, seems to run from when we mention about having a forensic audit. Yes ma'am, so what I'd like to say is that, that's all I requested when I first come in here. And the statement was made and I'm not, I don't wanna get off the subject, but with all that being said, it was mentioned in the media about, uh, the statements that were made with money to hide. I don't have anything to hide. Do you, Councilman Dan Slipp? You have anything to hide? What about you, Councilman Eddie?
No ma'am, I sure don't.
What about you, Councilman Smallwood?
No ma'am.
All right, so the three of y'all are the veterans, so you know, the thing of it is, the statement was made. You're a disgraced, uh, black rate, that's what's discriminating. That was a statement that was made and that was made in an, uh, open meeting and said that, uh, by one of the councilmen. And said, if you go to jail, I'm going to jail too, well, why would that need to be addressed? We don't pass it on twice. So, I'm saying, these kinds of things, you all, this is a, this is the city of Gordon. We all live here all of our lives, I think all of us are parts of this city. And this city has instead of progressive regress. I mean, it's a shame with all this money coming through here and we don't have anything to show for it. Now, this is a council meeting, I grew up here, went away to college, come back, and still, I'm worse off than what I was when I, I grew up here.
We get back to what we were talking about.
We still what we're talking about. And this is talking about the monies. Um, uh, I'm sure there's gonna be many open records coming forward as, uh, just like they said, you open it up, you open the door, and folks are walking in. So, now, anything else, any further discussion?
Let's just get back to the topic.
Oh, I'm still on it, never left it.
You have to, you don't let.
Uh, it is, I'm, I'm a part of this too. Y'all sent all the open records and made them to me, so as I say once more again, if you can, can't take it, don't dish it out. That's the bottom line, that's my take, but nevertheless, you all are the council.
We're gonna move forward, ma'am. I make a motion that we authorize our attorneys to go to the Superior Court and seek some, uh, injunction relief on the record request.
Motion has been made as second, all in favor. Starting with Wayne.
I. Let me clarify.
Well, no, there's already been motion as second, you can't clarify.
I wanna clarify that.
But we can't do that, we're in the middle of a vote. Now, if you, do y'all wanna hear what he has to say?
I would, yes.
Now, one thing, and I don't mind that, but this is, I've heard you say in many, uh, instances, we've already voted, made the recommendation, and it's already been second.
We hadn't voted, did we?
Well, it's, you've got two votes.
I might need to change the wording or something in the motion, I wanna make the church legal.
Excuse me, what'd you say, Councilwoman Whipple?
We had, we had got to second vote, I had voted no.
I didn't hear any of that, who's, who all voted, all I've heard is a motion as second.
Well, he said yes, he voted yes.
Alright, and you voted no? Sorry, I missed that.
And I need, uh, uh, the front row, please, be quiet. Uh, what'd you say, Councilwoman Towe? Smallwood.
I thought.
I.
I thought.
Okay, the eyes have, so moving right along, let us hear from the, no further discussion about anything else. So, let's move on to the Main Street Committee, where's, uh, Mr. Daniels? Bruce Daniels, is anybody here representing Main Street? Is he available? Does anybody wanna care to give a report about what transpired? Alright, except, you know, I don't know what, did you hear Councilman Eddie since you're mayor pro tem? Because I, as a mayor, didn't get any feedback except we got out there and, uh, there was no egg hunt. And I think specifically, it may have been due to the weather, but, uh, at eleven o'clock, uh, I think it was maybe after, it was to start at what time? One, but when I got out there, you know, it had rained already, but there should have been, put back to me, some kind of, uh, something in place to let the people know. Because people came from far and near. But nevertheless, we'll move on. Okay, uh, fire?
Fires have been pretty good, we have had, you know, still a lot of, uh, emergency calls. We had a tractor trailer with a log truck turned over just up the street from my house this evening, about three thirty.
Has anybody heard?
Not bad, I mean, the log truck driver worried to avoid hitting another vehicle, you know, really slalit and, uh, his truck turned over and scattered all the logs. So, it's still pretty much congested up at Kinneyton Road and Fall Line, but everybody was okay.
Well, no one out of that road or law, that those trucks allowed to come?
There's log trucks coming from Macon headed out towards I've eaten that direction. And, uh, this, uh, Diana Hodges, you know, and another vehicle sides watching each other and hit big trucks, swerved aboard them. And he hit, uh, one of the vehicles on the side and then his truck turned over. He did a good job with the board and hit him really hard, so he did real good. Other than a few things like that, we've had just some small fires, grass fires, side of the road, and that's about it lately.
Alright, now moving along to streets. The Hollis Street project, uh, I hadn't had a chance this week, last week, to, uh, get with Mr. Eddie. But I was, uh, would like to know, um, from the clerk, uh, Ms. Bryant, could you, uh, get in touch with, uh, Mr. Spence Sebastian? To, uh, so that me and Mr. Eddie can, uh, sit down and talk with him.
I can do that, or do you need this number?
Okay, so that we can talk with him, because he's the engineer that we had voted on to, uh, handle that project for us. So, when, as soon as we can, and.
He only works when we call him.
And about Ms. Mayor, it's McQuarly, the lady that was here, uh, at the last council meeting. You appointed, I think, um, me and, uh, Mr. Wayne and Melvin to work on that, on that project together. So, where are you all with that? Uh, well, Melvin, uh, Superintendent Lawrence, he can, uh, tell you more about it. Mr. Lawrence, can you come down and address, just come up here to the podium, please, if you can.
It's, it's just like, uh, I was telling, uh, Mr. Whipple, that, uh, we had talked to, uh, Mr. Wayne and Mr. Eddie. And we was going to get a hold of Georgia Rural Water to see about the possibility of, uh, videoing the sewer line going through that, I miss saying, McCollum's house. And, uh, and to see if there is any structural damage to the main line. And we was just gonna go from there, but the Georgia Rural Water was calling, letting me know, man, they could come, probably say that was back though.
So, they, have they given a roundabout or a guesstimate?
He said he was gonna give me a, a call back this week.
Okay.
And then hopefully, we'll have something scheduled by the end of the week.
Okay, so you just keep them posted as, as to, and we continue to do a follow-up report. Thank you. Anything else?
I have one more thing that I would, uh, like to work on, but it's, it's not really about the street. Uh, Ms., uh, I didn't notice, and I don't know how many people in here did know this, uh, Ms. Connie Lewis.
Who?
Ms. Connie Lewis. Okay, Ms. Connie Lewis, she is, uh, she is really Gordon's first, uh, first lady. She was once mayor to the mayor of Gordon. I don't, I, and I just found this out since I've been on city council. And, uh, I was just wondering, could, if this council, the mayor and this council could do something special one day? Because a lot of people don't know this, and if we could do something special for her one day, maybe, uh, proclaim one day as, uh, Ms. Connie Lewis's day. And do something special for her, and, uh, if it's alright with this council and the mayor, maybe give her a certificate or something. I think she's ninety-five years old and, and it's really a part of our history, she's really the only living wife of a mayor of the city of Gordon.
Is that right? I think that'd be a great gesture, uh, as a matter of fact, I know many other municipalities that do that. And, uh, I don't have a, uh, I would enjoy, uh, you know, being, uh, a part of that, making sure that, that's, uh, a historical moment right there. That she still, uh, survives, is surviving right now.
And she's ninety-five years old at this time, so I think it would be, uh, something special to do, you know, for her.
So, we, um, we'll get, we'll, uh, I think, Council, you all.
Sure, she was my first grade teacher right here, I went to first grade right in that room right there, she was my first grade teacher right there.
Now, you know this building needs updating any of you. I mean, it's good. Exactly, but anyway, we, we'll, uh, at the next council meeting, uh, thank you so much for that.
She's really a special lady, she's very.
Exactly, and, uh, if you know of any, any, any ideas that you all have, I'm open. So, bring those, uh, to me and we'll make sure that she gets recognized. And as a matter of fact, I think I, uh, mentioned that some year, uh, maybe a, a year or so later when I was, before I was just, uh, suspended from office. That these are great ideas, uh, giving, uh, you know, outstanding citizens of the community and, uh, issuing, uh, those kinds of certificates. Uh, to outstanding citizens and recognizing.
You did mention that one time.
Exactly, so that would fall under that umbrella, so yes, we look forward, that's what we're about, promoting the folk in this city. Thank you so much. Now, moving right along to police, Councilwoman Towe.
Will that have to be reported to you, do you have anything to you?
Just hit that deer, they hit a deer.
Who hit a deer?
That is.
You did?
Actually, the vehicle beside me hit the deer, slung the deer on the front of my vehicle. Dented the fender, it hit the brush guard on the front, but it kinda wrapped around, hit the side toner and put a dent in the fender. Get the estimate on it.
Is that the city truck or your personal truck? So, is it out of commission?
No, it's not out of commission, just got a dent in it, right front fender there.
We're glad to know you said.
Everything's been working the way.
Sanitation, uh, Councilman Dan Slipp?
Uh, not really nothing on, uh, sanitation, but there's something on the street that I noticed. Uh, since we had so much problem with the folk on the, this is the Superintendent Lawrence, on the Fayetteville Road, right at the bridge, they were in two holes. And then we had all that problem just across the bridge where that lady hit me, had that damage to the car. So, there's some more holes coming on this side of the bridge.
Okay.
Weighing pretty good.
Okay, so that's inside the city limits, right?
Yeah, right, around the curve on the Fayetteville Road, that little bridge.
Okay, well, now, where is the city limits sound? One time it was up beyond the, um, uh, do you know, any of y'all know?
Goes up Ferriswood Road.
This side of it, it's about, if you look at the map, it's hard to tell, you know, with the, uh, map. But it's about twenty-five or thirty yards this side of, uh, that road that turns to the left, it's about twenty, twenty-five yards this side of it.
Okay, alright, so, uh, with that being said, and, and I know, uh, Councilman Wilder on that too, uh, up Westwood Road, there's another little pothole that was full, but, uh, another one. Uh, uh, we don't want our citizens coming with open records and complaining about potholes and they got fender benders. So, would you take care of that too while we're on that?
Sure.
Thank you so much, you do a very fine job of doing that. Okay, uh, with all that being said, next we'll have, uh, citizens to be heard, Mr. Louis Knight, uh, are you here?
Yes.
Would you please come down? And good evening to you all.
Thank you.
Come down to the, can you move it just a bit out of? Thank you. And please address the council. Fine, thank you.
If you know about our sewer, what, I watered. My dad know that you all were, the city was chosen sewer for the resident that he did it. However, when he opened up the application, it was in two thousand and ten, they give in option water sewer although he selected both. I'm just saying that I received it as sewer doing. However, I went down because I asked her, we are accepted, my dad told us we're accepted, from time to time while we're on sewers with. So, I took the paper down to the water department and she said, well, I can't find it, I'll have to ask Melvin. So, the next day she called me and she said, Colonel Melvin, that December the second, department two eight, two thousand and ten, Colonel Melvin, we are not accessible to sewer. So, she credited me a year's credit of two bill back. And I told her that we weren't satisfied with that due to the fact that if you all knew that we were allowed to be on sewer, we should not have been charged sewer. So, no matter how far it is to go back, it needs to be reimbursed, because that was just, that's money that was not used. As well as her saying, we were gonna be switched to sewer years back and we still have yet to be swapped to sewer.
Who said you were going to be switched to sewer?
The lady that went to the water department. What's the?
Uh, identify yourself to.
Not her, I'm sorry, if that.
You, identify you, what's your name?
Shannon Knight.
And you're the daughter of Mr. Knight?
Yeah. So, they got on him that she removed the code on the first of this year, but it was gonna credit it for a year. There's too much money to be gone.
So, do we have a policy on that that?
Uh, it's always been, um.
Is that in writing?
No ma'am, it's verbal policy, they just get back one year sewer, just because they have a responsibility to notify us too, it's always on every water bill. Someone should have called it over the years and nobody did, so we just go back and give them one year, because that's basically all that's gonna be on your computer.
Okay.
Yes, Shannon, I asked you something. When did you first report this to the city?
Uh, what year? Two thousand and, it, it's been a while, like two thousand and eleven.
But I was told that the sewer line was coming through that.
Yep.
I didn't hear more change.
So, after you said to the city and told them that you weren't, you didn't have sewer, they still charged you, they kept charging you?
Yeah.
And you said it was in two thousand and eleven?
Now, listen, as well as when you just spoke with her, this is the first of February, March, she said that we would be put on the docket.
Three minutes.
For last minute. And we weren't put on that docket. She said she went out in time, but you had time enough to put us on that docket the day that we signed these papers. I'm not.
Three minutes, a little higher.
Okay, uh, I, I need to hear this, go ahead.
Uh, then that, she, this is what she gave us, she didn't even sign nor date it, but it was on the same date, which was the first, uh, harsh. We were supposed to place on that docket, we were, so now we're here at this docket. And you all are saying that that's a verbal notice, but that was in effect after, she just only told me that she was uncredited, you met Kirstie Melvin, that he approved it, that we weren't sewer accessible. Other actual witnesses was us to come here to talk to you all.
Council, you all have heard what they've said now. I understand, and I, I think I heard what you said, and I heard what the clerk said, there's nothing in writing.
Correct.
So, I think we need to change this, if we don't tell something, I mean, it may be on the note, is it visible so you can see it? But I'm just saying if, um, how do you all wanna, uh, deal with this?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this matter so we can discuss it further, there's too much information, I think, for us to try to make a decision this week right now. I'd like to find out more, maybe we do need to, you know, go back and do a little research. So, I, I'd like to make a motion that we table it, we'll bring it back up and let us talk about it and we'll get back with y'all, if you don't mind.
Fire? Y'all are in agreement with that?
Uh, how long that takes, with this extra time, extra month, will they stop it, so it should be in progress for the board, but how long will that take? As far as we've been able to speak to you all again?
We should get on it pretty quick, I tell you, yes ma'am.
Alright, Councilman, this motion has been made, I, it's the second. Okay, come, alright, Councilman Dan Slipp?
I agree with it.
I.
Thank you.
Alright, the eyes have, thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, we need to follow these rules if we're gonna do it now.
Oh, um, thank you. Alright, moving right along, we have Ms. Catherine Wells regarding reimbursement, uh, is she here?
Ms. Valentine, it's three minutes, you have it.
Uh, exactly.
I know, this is a mistake that y'all made, Miss McCallie here a couple of minutes.
I know, it's just a mistake that y'all gave Ms. McCollum here a couple meetings back, more than three minutes. And I am going to be addressing more than one issue, uh, more than one individual.
Three minutes.
Uh, excuse me, uh, let's, let's just hear what you have to say, okay?
Okay.
Now, there are three minutes.
Excuse me, if you would quit talking so I can get my...
Uh, excuse me.
I'm not continuing, you are.
Ms. Will, please, say, uh, you're addressing Council, and not Mr. Wayne.
Okay.
Or Council.
First, I want to clarify that I'm going to bring, uh, um, the credit card I'm going to bring in ends with zero nine eight five, as in the documents I'm going to present, and not nine zero eight five, that's posted on the agenda on the doors. Alright, since March two thousand fourteen, I've heard quite a bit at council regarding the city credit card, and reimburse...
Excuse me, is this an error, that nine zero eight five?
That's on the door.
I don't know, I have to look for a request.
Initially, the authorized signature on the card was still in former Mayor Kenneth Turner's name, and there was talk at council about having it changed to Mayor Wicker Loop, or even a different authorized individual. Also, at some point, there was an issue about paying, uh, the approximate seventy-five hundred dollar balance due on the card before obtaining a new one, and council approved paying that. At another meeting, it was disclosed that the card had an expiration date, and again, there was another balance due. Uh, on August eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Auditor Bill Basket came before council to talk about his position, and is getting paid. He presented a spreadsheet of excess meal reimbursements he calculated were made to, um, Terry Edie, who had taken his family with him on a Savannah trip, and essentially, the city paid more than just him and his wife. Council members shared that when they took office, they were told that they could take one other person with them on training trips and conferences. At the last meeting on March twenty-first, the subject of council taking others on city business trips came up again, along with the discussion of guests, family members, spouses, or significant others. The Georgia Municipal Association says only the council member himself should receive reimbursement, and Mr. Edie claimed that Gordon has its own, uh, policy and approves otherwise. The mayor asked to be shown that policy. Uh, Mayor, in the last two weeks, has anyone shown you that policy?
No.
Okay, uh, Mr. Smallwood, you went to the mayor's, alright, I'm gonna pass these out, uh, the first three pages.
Three minutes is expired, ma'am.
First three pages are Mr., um, Smallwood, and, uh, he was reimbursed eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for a trip. It's headed another conference where he is reimbursed twelve hundred and eleven, uh, twelve hundred and eleven dollars and change. I have a copy of a memo, the Georgia Municipal Association, that says that the registration center for Gordon's attendees in Atlanta were all paid with the credit card ending in zero nine eight five, uh, which was the city credit card. I have a copy of Mr. Smallwood's itemized expense report, and also a copy of the statement.
This, this is just, this is just slander to some of our council people.
Three minutes is up, I do not think we're gonna give any more time. If we're gonna stick with rules, it's three minutes, and that's it, she had time to make her point, and that's it.
And I understand what you're saying.
I called for the time to be cut off.
I have one more thing to say.
Let's give her, let's give her...
That is, that is, alright.
Go ahead.
Attorney's issues tonight, I'm making an open, open records request to the city for copies of credit card statements for the month of January and February two thousand fourteen, and also June and July two thousand fourteen, for the credit card in, in zero nine eight five. Now, to avoid any excess work and the girls over at City Hall, you should be able to contact the bank that issued that credit card, and have them provide those statements. It should only be but a couple minute call, and I'm sure they would fax that documents to you in a matter of minutes, and we can all avoid time and money.
Does that have to work that way?
Is that anything else? Is there anything you need to talk?
No, other than the documents there, and there was time, a time in Smallwood's documents where he was reimbursed, and Terry Edie's where he was reimbursed.
Damn, that's under Harrison's. That's right by here.
Excuse me, um, is there anything else?
No, I would love to have finished with what I had to say, but that's quite alright. It shows prejudice here going on within this city, uh, right now, this council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, excuse, excuse me, this is for the city council, a board, for us to, uh, conduct the council meeting. You all have been very disrespected, uh, disrespectful. And we will, now, if you're going to holler out three minutes, y'all should have did that at the last meeting, attorney. I mean, you all have a duty, you all have a duty, you all have a duty to do that. If you were going to do that and yell out three minutes, then you should have did that at the last meeting. We don't get here and show, uh, preferential treatment. I don't care who it is, black, white, yellow, or blue, this council will not entertain that. So with that being said...
Excuse me, Mayor, you should tell the people when they get up, you got three minutes. If you're conducting this meeting, so you should tell them.
Well, I wish you had, uh, told Ms. McCollum that, we gave her as much time.
I didn't say anything, ma'am.
That's exactly why, that was, uh, excuse me, excuse me, uh, anybody, for anyone who wants to state their claim, get on the agenda. I'm sure if you go over to, uh, Macon, to Mayor Rick's office, you all would never conduct yourselves that way, if you go over to Baldwin County, and we're not going to tolerate this here in this city. As a matter of fact, we have, uh, rules and procedures for conduct of, for the council meeting, but you know when the council people are out of order, guess what? You expect the, the tail to be out of order, but we need to maintain order here, you all. You all are adults, I was raised as a child regardless, right or wrong, black or white, rich or poor, respect. I went through school, and it's, and, and I, I agree with that, but you all are so disrespectful. And I will say that, and I don't have a problem saying that, as old as you all are, y'all know better. You may not like me, but you will respect me. I don't care whether Mr. Denzley and I disagree, I still have to respect him. I don't care if Councilman Edie and I disagree, I still have to respect him. But guess what, I'm going to respect him, and I'm, I'm going to maintain respect with him, instead of us sitting up there acting like children. Small grass, for sure. If you've got some issues you don't like, go to the voting booth and take it to the voting booth and deal with it. Now, with that being said, if there's no further discussion, Council, you have a right to question. A motion has been made and seconded, now get up and go. Councilman Denzley, roll.
Aye.
Let's go watch the game, huh?
What y'all...
In the director's car.
How you doing?
We ain't got no car seats in that, it's...